Yours?
Man, things on here. Woo, you guys, you get to go in the hot seat today.
All right.
Is that Mike Howard's name on the plaque there? It's got his name.
His name.
You have your own name on the plaque? Wow. Sure you are, I'm impressed.
Now he's within striking distance from me, sir.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, June 28, 2021. Please let the record reflect that we do have a quorum of Commissioners Altman, Dillinger, and Harebrant present. If you would all please stand for the pledge of allegiance, and Christine, could you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up is the approval of Executive Session Memorandum from 6/28/2021.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of meeting minutes from June 14, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. and also June 14, 2021 at 1:00 p.m.
We approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Criminal justice system, department audits. Mr. Fed Councilman Fred Glenn, we'll have you come up first.
I don't get a lot of applause or anything from the commissioners.
No, not yet.
I'll hand this to you guys really quick. We did a, this is just from our last meeting, we had some questions that we asked the people.
Yeah, yeah. You can give this to him. Oh, he's giving it to you.
This was something that we came up with a while back. I think that, I mean Commissioner Harebrant is very familiar with what we've been doing. The other two commissioners, I think you followed a little bit loosely, but it was about transparency. You know, bringing more information to the council and more that we can present to the public. This was something that I learned about when I spent some time out west with some other governments. This was a way that they got their budget in line. After meeting several times with our group, we came up with the public safety agencies. Although we have the utmost confidence in our public safety agencies here in Hamilton County, we do, you know, realize we got a AAA bond rating, a lot's coming before us with expansion of the court, talking about knocking out that back building, space needs and things of that nature, so we figured that'd be a great place to start. We went to the sheriff, and as transparent as he is, he was more than willing to engage in this project with us, so I want to thank the sheriff for that. We got the information from the last meeting and the questions they asked, I've had it over to you guys. After the last meeting, we had two people respond. We went KPMG. The group, I think together, decided that would be the way to go. They were the ones that answered the questions the most, they were, they were upfront the most. With pricing, this is a group that we can engage with them, the project, if the commissioners deem necessary to do this. They don't charge us anything upfront, they start working on this for months in advance, and we'll start seeing results before we ever pay them anything, before we even put the first 50% down. As you can see, if you go through here, it's a six-month process going through each agency. And I'll take any questions, trying to make it short so we, I think you guys kind of know what we're doing, so.
I'll leave it up to Commissioner Dillinger and Altman to have any questions, then I'll put my...
I'm not sure I understand what you're trying to accomplish here.
Well, the thing is, you know, and I get it, like I said, I said at the beginning, we got AAA bond rating, we got a great public safety agency, so on the surface, it's not something you want to look at. At first, we, we, you know, it's something that the council every year looks at this budget, and we got very limited information that we're voting on. This would help us to be able to understand more of what we're doing, I think, understand that there's some more efficiencies, and we could present to the public that we are spending their tax dollars in the most efficient way possible, no matter what. They bring this back to us, and, you know, they give recommendations, as long as I, if we had the wherewithal to implement these recommendations, I think we'll be better for it. These guys have, you know, the guarantee they gave us, for every dollar that we put in, they'll come back with at least a dollar fifty on what we spent, and recommendations to save on our budget. And we're starting, we're only starting with one agency, doesn't mean we have to move through all of county government, but, I mean, you know, you're looking at what's going on in our public safety agencies today, with, we got a whole half an empty building here, we want to move this over. I think if we do this, and it comes back that we need to do what we're talking about doing, we could tell the public that we did our due diligence and everything we did here.
Okay, a couple questions for me.
Okay.
This is going to cover the jail and the sheriff's administration?
The sheriff's administration, probation, the courts.
Okay, but...
And their public safety complex or...
Community corrections.
Community corrections, yeah, all of our kind of public safety.
They'll look at staff, they'll look at staffing, they'll look at shifting, they'll look at vacation time.
Everything.
Okay, so it'll be your whole, whatever you oversee will be reviewed, correct, Dennis?
Yeah, mine, mine and others, yes.
Oh, and Ralph with... I think you got to start somewhere, and this'll be, the biggest part when I sat on council of our budget is corrections. I mean, by far, our biggest investment, and I don't have a problem investing, it's not insignificant, but at least we'll see whether their belief that they come back with 150% savings on investment, the ROI, we'll find out.
Yeah.
You know, the one thing that I did want to, I wanted to commend the committee that was put together, was Council President Amy Moss-Lamani, Councilman Ken Alexander, Councilman Fred Glenn, myself, Dan Stevens also was part of that committee, and I know that Connor Sullivan said in the, in the interview meetings as well, one thing that I wanted to say was that both of the firms that were interviewed were very well qualified, and they did an excellent job, Baker-Tilly, and, and they did a really good job in the interview as well. And it was, it was a tough decision really for the entire committee because they were both really good firms, and, but, you know, everybody, you know, was able to speak, we had good conversation, we talked about, we asked a lot of tough questions to both of the firms, and I thought we did our due diligence in the interviewing firms, so I wanted to commend everybody, you know, for that. I also, you know, given the fact that we are going to eventually, because of the courts and our judges and their case overloads that they have, we're going to have to expand this building at some time. And so I think that too, doing our due diligence to make sure that we have, whether it's our courtrooms are properly sized, are they, are they, are they too big? Is there enough personnel? Do we have enough personnel, or is there too, too much up there? Really getting our arms wrapped around what do we have, and are there some efficiencies that could be found with this? And I think that what this will do will confirm whether that is happening or not.
Let's start out with this, and as we go through the process, and I would hope, I know you're not shy, I mean, some of the recommendations may not make sense operationally, and that's where I think you're going to be very careful when you review their recommendations on, you know, does it make sense operationally even though we could save money?
Yeah, and, and staffing is our largest expense, and I think it's important that they use people who understand corrections and some of the requirements that, that go into staffing a corrections facility.
The only thing, I think we, within this day and age, and I've spoken to the sheriff about this, and like I said, I do appreciate his willingness to be so transparent and commit right away, is just that, that people know that as we're putting this out, that it's nothing to do with our confidence in our public safety agencies, it's just us being transparent and going through every dollar and making sure we're spending taxpayers' money appropriately, and spacing needs with all the stuff that's coming up.
You know, Sheriff Plankbush, I commend you for having an open door policy and being completely transparent. You know, some sheriffs would say, no, you're not coming in and looking at my facility. This is, you know, I'm protective of it, and kudos to you for having an open mind and looking at this.
But, thank you, I think the more eyes are looking at it, and the more transparent we are to the public, the better. I think you're going to find we're doing a lot of things right, and hopefully they do find a few efficiencies that we could take advantage of and save our taxpayers some money, but, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I move to approve the first phase with the, any other departments coming back before the commissioners.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have been too nice to me when I've come up in front of you.
We try.
We usually get dinner at the end, towards the end of the...
Yeah, we should come up first.
Thank you. Next up is plot approval, Dave Lucas. Stevens subdivision.
We have one plot on the agenda, it is the Mole Stevens subdivision at 166th and Cumberland Road, and we recommend approval of the plot.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Highway business.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have one road cut for your consideration today, this is on 231st Street, approximately 75 feet west of Tollgate Road. This is for the installation of a 30-inch foam shore for the Marion Eagle, where it goes to drain. This is really the only way that this train is an open cut. We recommend the board approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have no private traffic control permits, no vehicle exemption permits, no bond for acceptance or release, which brings you to agreement with the supplements. First time I have this supplemental agreement withdrawn with Stephen J. Christian Associates, Division 154, 126th Street of Cool Creek. This supplemental has an amount of $107,435, what is written in the map, we exceed the amount of $107,435. This basically adds all the real engineering to the original study, SWIPIN study that is done, we recommend the board approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
At this point, I would request that the commissioners untable the two supplemental agreements from USI Consultants, untable them at the next meeting, 126th Street Phase 3 and Phase 4 respectively.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The first supplement is for 146th Street Expansion Phase 3. This supplement is strictly to update employee classification and rates for the, for this inspection contract, there is no increased cost, we recommend the board approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Question over 146th Street out there. Are we aware of exactly what Boone County intends to do from there to 65?
Do you know that they have had a consultant look at that out there? I believe that was, you know, listening after we talked with them last week, another, another project, and we, they did cover briefly with us what they've done, but as far as the timeline or anything like that, I don't think we have. I think they had a timeline, it says there's some issues around the White Town area.
Do they have the right-of-way protected?
Do they have it in their thoroughfare plan?
See, Bill, Bill Carnes and I went over there and talked with their commissioners back in probably 91, 92 maybe, and asked them to protect that right-of-way.
I think they have it to 421. They have that right-of-way to get to that point, and I don't know a lot on...
Well, we were told that it was going to go through Joe's barn over there, and you didn't like that at all, so we wouldn't do it back then.
Well, last I heard, they're going to do a super two. Basically, that was what they're but buying right-of-way to go into two lanes each direction. That was years ago. That was what I'd always heard Boone County... I know. But that was what they were going to construct, but they were going to acquire right-of-way.
Yeah, I had heard that too, that's the reason I ask.
So do we know, I mean, do they, I mean, other than they're looking at it?
I don't know what that means certainty or status. I know they, I know they're looking at it, they have a plan to get it to 65, but I don't know the status of the segments, or, it passes, it passes through three jurisdictions at this point.
You got...
You have Boone County, White Town, and...
What's the other one?
Zinsville.
Zinsville, yes.
So maybe, can you...
It should be in the NPLs on transportation.
Can, can you, as director to director to their highway guy, ask if they can give us an, or give you an update of what's going on, so we have at least an answer from a highway perspective? Also ask them what they're, they're doing plan commission-wise to try to protect it in their fair plan?
Okay.
And might as well find out the answer, and then if we need to chat, we can chat at the commissioner level.
Well, I think if the commissioners they have today, I think they would be very cooperative, but back then they wasn't too interested in doing anything.
There's, they're, they're a great group of guys right now.
Well, one commission's very active in the NPL.
Well, Jeff, Jeff Wolcott, Tom, Tom Centilli, and, you know, Lawson, they're all good people.
Let's start there.
The next agreement I have is supplemental number one, 1246th Street Expansion Phase 4. This one is just adding an employee classification, we recommend the board approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so what's our most recent ETA for our portion to get done?
Is it?
Just number one?
October, yeah.
Then we're out of the 146th Street business for a while?
Till we get to the intersections.
Yeah.
Well, we got the main thing though.
I have no separate streets, no traffic center correspondence, which brings you to request to advertise and sign titles sheet for small structures 33016 and 23017. This is 156th Street of Deer Creek. This will be for a bid opening at 1:45 p.m. local time, August 9, 2021. We recommend the board approve advertising and...
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I have no official actions for your other correspondence or announcements, and I think that's pretty hard to do. The only thing, just bring your attention, we have an agreement that we need to execute yet within that, but 236th Street, Endos 31, so I think we've talked about this one before, we just haven't gotten it done, so I'll probably send that out to you guys and get that on the agenda in the distant future.
Are we...
It's about the transfer of the roads, and we're going on the interchange after us.
Are you anticipating anything for the July highway meeting, because I will not be there?
I had an agreement. That's the only thing I...
That's the only major thing.
You mean for the Friday meeting?
Yeah, Friday meeting.
Oh, I can do this at a regular meeting, so now I don't have anything right now at Friday, July.
Okay, I'm just, if you have a form, you should just make sure you're aware of that.
Just the private things that Mark and I have on the agenda there?
Yes.
The special things.
The special things.
All right, moving on, probation, Bob Bragg. Don't see Mr. Bragg.
I'm seeing him here.
All right, then we will move on. COVID update, Christian Walker.
Good afternoon. During this month, we've had fewer than 20 K's, new cases of COVID each day. Generally, it's been 12 or under, we did have a few days where it was a little bit higher, but our positivity rate at this point is 2%, which means we are not having community transmission right now. That's great on one hand, the downside of that is that we will have to take over contact tracing for when someone tests positive, so that becomes another time constraint on our staff that we'll have to work through in the days coming up, so.
Do we have federal grant dollars to cover that?
I, I'll double check with Shane, but I believe that would be covered under the FEMA PA reimbursement, so we should be okay on that. We do also have the folks that have been helping with the vaccination clinic, but we might be able to educate on contact tracing and employment in that capacity as well.
What, what's our percentage of the Delta variant?
There's only been 106 cases statewide, so it's very low. If I remember right, our breakthrough cases are .087%. That's of, you know, breakthrough is if you're fully vaccinated, then you do contract COVID.
So what's that percentage again?
.087.
Percent?
Percent, correct. It's about 2,000 individuals throughout the entire state.
Okay.
So again, 106 of those are the Delta, or I'm sorry, we haven't had 106 cases of the Delta variant statewide. They don't break it down below that because there's the potential for the HIPAA violation.
And what is the Hamilton County Health Board guidance on school opening for those 12 and under?
Right now, I don't know that they've necessarily put anything out. We meet, I believe it's the 14th, the, uh, two weeks from now, three weeks from now, is when we meet, and I'm sure they will put out a recommendation at that point, which...
And is it still online that we expect vaccine availability for 6 and above? We, last I heard, it was September.
That's, that's still on track for what we understand, and we are starting to work on messaging for back-to-school regular immunizations as well as COVID immunizations as well, and we're working with Tammy to craft that and have that ready to go for both sets of age groups, 12 and up, and 5 or 6, whatever the FDA approves, and to make sure that we're covering it.
So do you have a plan on deployment of vaccines for that age group?
So right now, we don't. It'll mostly, it'll depend on if it's Pfizer or Moderna. You know, we do have some concern at this point, shouldn't say we do, there has been some concern at this point with the myocarditis, the inflammation of the heart in the younger age groups with both Moderna and Pfizer. I think the advisory went a little better than it did with Johnson &amp; Johnson, so I don't think the aversion to the vaccine will be as bad, but there will definitely need to be more education and a more reasoned and education, reasoned-out approach to educating those parents as well.
Well, it's not too far away in September, so.
No, and we do have some opportunities coming up. We did just do a vaccine clinic. We supported Trinity Free Clinic and Garen High School. They provided a clinic last weekend for, specifically for students and the marginalized population, but it was open to everybody, and it sounds like they had a very successful operation out there. And we've also, we have 67.4% of our eligible population is fully vaccinated. That's 189,000 individuals. That's the highest percentage in the state, the second highest number-wise, only second behind Marion County. We do see a large decrease in the, in folks wanting to come get it. It's not to be expected, or it's not unexpected at this point. We are looking at some opportunities. We will be opening a clinic up in Sheridan, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays to help boost up the opportunities in the northern half of the county where the percentages are much lower than the southern, two-thirds of the county. And we're also opening up clinic hours Monday, Wednesday, and Friday in our office as well to help provide those opportunities outside of the fairgrounds at this point.
Excuse me, what did you say our vaccination rate was?
Our, uh, the countywide is 67.4%. I believe Sheridan area, 46069, is about 40%. 46030 had a 15% jump just since the last time we met. They're up over 45%. 46031 is still in the low to mid-30% range. So we're trying to get up there, and when we went up there and started doing our initial site assessments, Ella Pharmacy in Sheridan is providing vaccine. However, the only one they have available is Johnson &amp; Johnson, which we've seen such a high level of hesitancy with, so we're hoping by bringing Pfizer up there, that will help move the needle up in that area for them as well.
Thank you.
Barring any other questions, I think that's what I've got for you all today.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner, can I ask a question? Dan and I were discussing, do you still want Chris to come in and explain?
Um, for the next couple months, if you have time.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on. Let's go to Community Development Block Grant, Amy Jacobson. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Amy Jacobson, Executive Director, Noblesville Housing Authority. I'd like to introduce to you Linda Knight. Linda is, has been hired as our new Community Development Program Manager and just started last week. Linda and her family live in Westfield. She's been a resident of Hamilton County since 2004. She has over 20 years of experience in accounting. The last six years, she was working with State Board of Accounts and working with the CDVG program along with other, other federal programs there, and I'm really happy that she's here and a part of our staff now. I wanted to go over the, I'm sorry, I do, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, but I forgot the PowerPoint little thumb drive as I was walking out the door, so I apologize for that. But if you want to go through the handout, the, and this has not changed since the one I sent to you, or sent for the agenda on Wednesday, but for the Program Year 2021 CDVG and CDVG CB3 funds, this is the draft CDVG action plan and draft Program Year 2019 substantial amendment for the CDVG CB funds. Okay, thank you. Probably too late now, though. But the, for the Program Year 2021 priorities, the commissioners' priorities that were set, which are also part of our consolidated plan, are homelessness assistance, affordable housing, transportation, and food slash household goods assistance. So those were the priorities that were set aside. There's a really strong emphasis on the, on the need for affordable housing, and meeting with Commissioner Altman and Commissioner Harebrant, and also Commissioner Dillinger had, you know, good discussions about this. There is such a great need for affordable housing in Hamilton County. It's really a great opportunity, an important opportunity, to take advantage of this extra funding that we have to try to get as much affordable housing as possible. The funds available on this next page, there's from Program Year 2021 CDVG allocation, there's And then for the CDVG CB3 allocation, $1,055,950. Then $141,428.22 reallocated from the CB1 allocation, and another $216,453.13 reallocated from prior year CDVG funds. So total available to allocate is $2,506,091.35. And then next is just a more simple spreadsheet that shows the funds that are recommended to allocate for the action plan. For the administration and fair housing, 20% of just the Program Year 21 funds is So that would be for the administration of the program, and also fair housing activities, also the housing needs assessment, or at least a portion of that could come from that, and also the fair housing education activities and consulting fees that are used to prepare the action plan and the CAPR are all rolled into that. For the public infrastructure, 40% of the allocation, this again is just the Program Year 21 CDVG allocation. City of Carmel, $144,922. $136,666 for the City of Fishers. City of Noblesville, $92,728. City of Westfield, $62,589. So a total of $436,905 for public infrastructure with the four cities. For the social services, we're recommending that the Shepherd Center of Hamilton County be awarded the $100,000 for senior care packages. Family Promise of Hamilton County, $58,500 to be used for financial assistance, and Prevail, Prevail Inc. of $10,000 for victim assistance. Meals on Wheels, $31,456 for the senior meals, and for Good Samaritan Network, $34,000 for food delivery. So a total of three, of $233,956 for the social services. And for the housing and public facility improvements, for Hand Incorporated, $500,000 for affordable housing land acquisition. Family Promise of Hamilton County, $500,000 for the affordable housing land acquisition. Both of those actually would be just affordable housing activities, so it could be land acquisition, could be purchasing a, a property and renovating it. And then also for Hamilton County, affordable housing activities, $616,778.35. These, these funds would be for activities that have not been identified yet, but we're in, are in the works for seeking out other opportunities to develop affordable housing. So the total, grand total is $2,506,091.35. And then on the next page is the next steps.
Before we go on to the next page, remind me again, what, what was Trinity and Prevail or Janus left out of this?
Yes, Trinity Free Clinic applied for $74,400 for the dental clinic, and Janus Developmental Services applied for $20,000 for disability services. And the, the reason that those were not recommended by us was because of the emphasis to prioritize affordable housing activities and the other activities that were, that were prioritized, but they were not, not priority, neither one of those were priority activities.
Well, how does Prevail fit into the priority?
Homeless. Just, the, the services would be, the, the people who are victims of domestic violence would fall under the homeless category.
But wouldn't they be served by Family Promise, or?
Or could they?
Or could they?
I, I think the, the two coordinate, yes, they would be, they could be served by Family Promise if it was a, a parent with children, but the two do, do coordinate. I don't know if anyone is here from Prevail or Family Promise that would want, would you want them to speak on it?
Do you know the answer to that?
Yes, I do.
Nancy Ramsey?
I'm Nancy Ramsey, Executive Director of Family Promise of Hamilton County. We do coordinate with Prevail on those families that we can assist with, but if they are currently fleeing a domestic violence situation where there might be a protective order, we cannot serve that family in our shelter due to our, our business model that stays in congregations and church buildings and so forth. That's not a secure place for that family to stay.
So who takes care of the families that are fleeing with protective orders?
Prevail does.
Do they rent rooms, or how do they do that?
Yes, they have hotel agreements, I believe. I shouldn't speak on behalf of Susan, but I think I can a little bit, in that, yes, they provide some money, financial assistance for hotels.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
On the, on the housing and public facility improvements, I'm just wondering whether we would be better off combining all those numbers into one, so we look at a project, or if we're unable to find a project, we then, I mean, because we're gonna be working with Hand and Family Promise, those are gonna be our providers anyway, but I hate to divvy things up when we don't know what opportunity may arrive wherever.
That makes sense?
With expectation.
Yep, that makes sense.
So, and it's not that we're cutting them out, it's just I don't know which, where opportunity, because it's gonna be very difficult to find a community and location where this is going to work, or a concept that's gonna work for Hamilton County. We may have to be more flexible in our approach. I don't know how the other two commissioners feel, but I just don't want to carve things up and lose control of funds when we're, because I, I can't guarantee we'll get money from any other part of county coffers for the, or the cities and towns. This may be our shot.
And the agency could still come back to the county commissioners and apply for specific, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we would have to.
That would, that would give us more flexibility.
Yes.
I mean, this, I kind of view this with this extra money coming in as maybe our one and only good shot right now to get our foot in the ground.
Yeah, I think that's a...
On that, because it's just such a difficult area to find attainable housing where it's accepted.
That makes sense.
Okay.
You have any questions, Steve?
Get there with that.
Yes.
Okay.
I think you did a good job laying this out. I mean, this whole spreadsheet and how you did the, the cost, I think you did a good job.
There's always more need than availability, so.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next steps are, there will be a public comment period on the draft action plan from July 1st through July 30th. The action plan will be available on the GoNHA.org website, the Hamilton County CDVG website, and there will, it will be, a summary of it will be published in both of the local newspapers, and hard copies will be available from our office. The second public hearing will be held on July 22nd at 2:30 PM at the Hamilton County Fairgrounds in the conference room of the Exhibition Hall. And then on August 9th, 2021, the county commissioners will review and approve the final Program Year 2021 action plan and amended Program Year 2019 action plan. And then August 16th is the deadline to submit the plan and the amended Program Year 2019 plan to HUD. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just breaks.
Any other comments on this?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Thank you. Bob Bragg?
Or Bob Bragg, yeah. Should do.
Probation, two items, JDI grant and the 2021 Problem Solving Court Grant Award.
Yes, thank you. We're just requesting that those grants be accepted. The Problem Solving Court is for chemical tests, urine screens that are completed on participants, and the Juvenile Detention Alternative Agreement, or Alternatives, is $22,000 of that goes towards a treatment specialist that's in the Shelter Care Facility to help with families reuniting for kids that are in there, mostly kids that have left home without permission or runaways, and that's an alternative to security detention for a lot of other youth. And then another $22,000 goes towards programs called Parental Home Detention, and so it's a person that is checking in with youth that are confined to their home other than school and work, or to be with their parents, and we have a person that's contracted to work with that program and let us know if there are any violations of that program. So that's, that's the lion's share of that. The rest of that is to attend meetings and so forth.
And that's a $10,000 grant award?
The $10,000 is for Problem Solving Court for the chemical tests, and the Juvenile Detention Alternatives is $53,000.
Make a motion to approve both drinks.
I'll second. I do have a question, though, on the juvenile. The person checking on in-home confinement, is there any element of counseling that goes with, or is it all just administrative?
It, it wouldn't be considered counseling. It would just, she does offer advice and some resources to parents who are having difficulties, so she will direct them, but she would not do any type of treatment or counseling.
It'd be nice if we could use some of these grant fundings to beef up the counseling element and not just be a gatekeeper.
Right, and that's, that's, the shelter care is for someone, the person that is contracted for that is through Aspire, and we do refer a lot of families to Aspire for low or no-cost treatment if they're eligible.
It's just I know capacity is an issue.
Right.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know one of the line items that we have on here at 145 was for low-cost bay neuter clinic, and Tammy Solenberger had sent an email response that she could not make it, so do we want to table this?
Yeah, table till our next meeting, so.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. ISSD, Heather Bennett.
The Indiana Office of Technology Credit Debit Card Service System for Hamilton County Extension.
Yes, good afternoon. This is a pretty basic contract. There's no fee to the county, and we are already under contract with Indiana Interactive, with the Recorder's Office, and with Household Hazardous Waste. So asking for it to be extended to the 4H Extension Office.
I would prefer.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Committee reports, Steve?
I have none.
No, I don't have any.
None? Only thing that I wanted to bring up was I had some discussions with our coroner. Um, it seems like he has been slammed, him and his, uh, deputies and his volunteer staff that he has. He just cannot seem to keep up. Um, you know, we've got a county that continues to grow and, um, with the staffing that he has, um, he just simply cannot keep up. Um, and that results in people waiting for some time to have the coroner come up to, whether it's to get a body, um, or whatever the case is, but, um, it's something that people, we don't think about, we don't talk about unless it happens, it's one of our relatives. Um, and then we want someone to be there. So, um, I'm just bringing it up to your attention that, um, there's going to need to be something happen with some staff, whether it's part-time or a full-time person, he's going to need some help.
I would think that that delay would also affect the police departments, have them stand on scene while they're waiting for them to get there, right?
Yeah, it does at times.
Well, I know we have a budget opportunity, but I really think if, if the situation is that way, he needs to go in for an additional and start that process now. I mean, and that's up to the coroner to do.
Right.
But you're absolutely right.
I think he looks for us to guide him, so, because he gets a little frustrated with his past experiences.
Well, give it a shot again. I, I think, do we support an additional personnel addition?
Absolutely.
Then let's encourage him to do that.
Yeah.
Go now and hopefully he's included it in next year's budget, but it sounds like it's something, to get somebody up to speed, he needs to ask for now.
Yeah, and then you've got Thurl that's getting ready to retire.
Retire, which is going to exacerbate the problem someplace.
It will make it worse because you've got somebody that has years and years of experience, um, that's not going to be there.
Right.
So as we pursue this, could you, would you take the initiative to talk with the coroner and do a little research so that maybe you could take the lead with the council on this?
Does the council have a liaison with the Coroner's Office, do you know?
I think that is really Steve's, I think it's Steve Schwartz, because Steve is really, I mean, Steve goes on calls on, with him all the time.
I'll touch base with Steve.
Um, and I mean, Steve puts in a tremendous amount of time.
Yeah, I know he does.
Um, you know, on, on calls himself, so. Anyway, that was all that I had. Uh, Mr. Attorney?
Uh, I have two things. One, uh, last meeting, we opened up a proposal for the, uh, Transportation RFP, um, and Janus was the one, uh, entity that submitted a proposal. Um, and going forward, I, it's my recommendation that we move forward with Janus, um, their fees, um, it's about one point six million dollars, but we do have, uh, federal funding, um, coming through that with Indigo. Uh, and we need to move forward with this so we can start talking to the cities and towns that are also in our regard, try to get them to match the costs of, or pay funds for us because they do get services out of that. So I would make the recommendation that we move forward with Janus. And once we get those numbers finalized, we'll get a contract Indigo's happy with and get before you guys and, um, start with the XP before January first of twenty twenty-two.
So did you, would you like a motion to accept that they're bid subject to contract negotiations?
Yes.
Take it.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And then the Haybig easement, I talked to Mike before this and he said that he, we'll have that before you guys the next meeting. Um, you did not get to it before I left.
Well, I know that he had to have some discussions from our conversation that we had with him, with the surveyor's office, um, before he could bring that, so, thank you. Uh, Director of Administration? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I do have handout for you that's been updated in the last fifteen minutes or so.
Always working.
Wow.
Started out with a very short list, but, um, I have a question.
Mr. Ron?
Uh, first item, submitting for Susan per annual request to allow the force staff to accumulate up to fifteen hours of extra time for the four days.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, submitting for review and approval and event application from Ron, uh, Wilson, representing the Hamilton County Veteran Organization for a memorial service on the Courthouse War Memorial, uh, on August twenty-first. The time will be from six to six-thirty and will honor Vietnam War veterans.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Next item, presenting for review and approval, proposal number two-one-zero-three-seven-five-dash-one from Stanley Security to install two multi-lens cameras to monitor the rearview parking area assigned to county employee parking. The amount of that proposal is twelve thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Obviously, we're on the cameras, protection complete.
Why is there a need for that?
I think it's protection of the employees, make them feel they're more prompt, uh, secure, I mean, parking out there, especially those who are walking back there after hours and, um, to give us a record if anything happens out in that parking lot, not like a drug.
Yep.
So does it just tape over the record, the cameras?
It'll hold thirty days and then it'll start recording.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Um, next item is the plan permission is, has requested approval from the Board of Commissioners to continue Byron settles in his capacity as the interim director until the end of this year, twenty-twenty-one. And he will continue in that role to assist the transition to the new, uh, director who is starting to run. An approval of the request will include the additional compensation of three hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-one cents per paid period for interest.
So moved, with the understanding that Byron has the full authority to act as the director of that department, um, over personnel and other matters?
Take it.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And the very last item, uh, Mr. Wood asked me to come out to the hallway. He has, you have to catch, the most recent building from Garmin came in this morning.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I asked Steve to check into this to make sure that he was satisfied, if it would be a proper invoice submitted. And he has talked to, uh, the folks at Garmin, understands everything that's listed and why it's listed. The amount of the current invoice is one million, five hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Would seek the board approval for.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sheriff?
I have two things for you. First is a, uh, agreement with Live Nation. Uh, it is the same exact language as previous years. Uh, the attorney's office has not reviewed this particular one because they've reviewed it in the past. My attorney has reviewed it.
Move to approve, and I'm just excited we get to approve a contract for Live Nation this year that they're going to have shows.
Yep.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Anything else?
And just the second thing, a point of clarification, just in case you guys saw the news, there was an errant, uh, press release by the state police that reported there was an escapee from the Hamilton County Jail.
Wasn't that work released?
Yeah, this was a work release individual who did not return and we arrested them in Fort Wayne with cooperation of the state police and it kind of got put out.
I was going to say, when I read it, I didn't think it was true.
None of this could put out?
Uh, a PIO for the state police didn't understand how that process works with community corrections, so.
Why would the state police be putting out a thing like that on us anyway?
They assisted in the arrest because the individual was in Fort Wayne, so we asked them to help us.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it not only caused problems.
I figured you would send us a little note if we hadn't.
Yeah, you will be the first to know.
Well, you always.
Not only caused a problem for me, but also for the sheriff in, uh, Hamilton County, Ohio.
Well, I'll be, I'll be honest with you, when I first read it, I thought it was Hamilton County, Ohio. That's what, that's what I told everybody. Uh, but I mean, you always do a really good job of calling us and letting us know what was going in. Because we didn't hear anything from you, it shocked me when I saw it and I read it and it didn't make sense.
Yeah, too busy calling to try to make the correction, so, yeah, just once it got to.
I'm sure they'll make that correction, won't they?
Do we know how often that happens with work releases?
Uh, it's a good question and not all of them are necessarily reported to us, so I think it's a better question for Ralph, but I would say on average, one every week and a half or so.
So it's unfortunately not an unusual occurrence in work releases?
Correct. It is not, it's not.
Unfortunately, this guy didn't sound like a really nice person. I was kind of surprised he was in work releases.
Yep.
Thanks.
Great, thank you. Adam Hunter?
I have a few things. First, I have a, um, liability claim for your approval today.
To move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, next I have some health trust claims for your approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, next I have acceptance of bonds and letters of credit for your approval.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, next I have payroll for your approval.
Move.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Uh, lastly, I have dinner claims for your approval.
Move.
Second.